Ready to come up and introduce yourself. It doesn't have it on here. Introduce yourselves and tell us what you're doing.
Sure, be happy to. Good evening, thank you for making time for us this evening. My name is Pat Pierce. I'm with Selling Property Group. And then this is John Phillips. And he and I are Selling Property Group. We're developers. We're out of Charlotte. We've had Radiator for, say we've had, we purchased it about three and a half years ago. And I was going to pull up my notes here if you'll bear with me just a minute. Thought we would give you a... As we said, we're here about this proposed development on Radiator Road. And I can go through the slides here, but, and I guess, I'm not too sure, do I do that? Is that what this is right here? Yes? I think it is? Okay. Yeah, I think I got it. So far, so good. Are y'all familiar with where Radiator Road is? Everyone's pretty familiar with that? Okay, I won't spend much time on that. We've got, so, if you've driven back there, there is, we bought this about three and a half years ago. And we actually had it under contract for, actually, a year or two before then. So we've been involved with it for quite a while. You know, it's about 73 acres on, and existing has about 330,000 square feet in two buildings. Since we purchased it, we put it in the brownfields program, if y'all are familiar with that. But that basically allows us some protections against the, that area, or that facility, contaminated the groundwater and Radiator did with their operations. And they have, they started cleaning it up. And whenever we bought it, we put in the brownfields program, which allows us some protection as the subsequent buyers to be able to use the facilities and lease them Since then, we put several million dollars into it. Really glamorous stuff like roofs and asphalt paving, office outfits, sprinkler systems. So we've spent a fair amount doing that. We've put a couple of new tenants in as well. The smaller building, I don't know if I've got, maybe that will show up. The building on the left there is occupied by Icon Aerospace. They're a good company. That was, whenever we purchased it, Blumenthal Holdings was in that building. Blumenthal is a legacy company of Radiator Specialty. They left. We were able to backfill it with Icon Aerospace, very good company that, they actually have a lot of employees. Do you remember how many employees they have?
It's well over 100.
Yeah, that's, you know, Blumenthal had maybe, I don't know, I want to say 30 or 40 people there. Icons has got probably well over 100 people there. And then, on the right side, the larger building, we have a company in there currently, Corson Logistics. They are likely going to leave in the next few months, and we're going to find another tenant to put there. So those buildings are in pretty good shape. They're big. One building's 100,000 feet, the other one's 220,000 feet. But really, what we've got proposed for, and what we wanted to discuss tonight with y'all was our idea on the next step of developing this property. This, that's another building, that shows this vacant land that we have. Where that arrow is, is really where we're speaking about. If y'all can see that, really what we're doing is extending a road back into this vacant land that we have. And our idea really is, I think it's going to be really appealing to small business owners. This will be similar to, and look and feel of, if y'all are familiar with Sardis Park, Stockbridge Drive, that area, and then also Sardis Church Business Park, Cannon Road, you know, you have smaller buildings there, all industrial. That's what this is going to feel like as well. So it's kind of tucked away. We're going to extend the road. Each of these buildings represents about 10,000 square feet. It'll have parking in front, it'll have some truck loading in back. And then the extra land, we would allow outside storage there. And I know a lot of people say, "Gosh, I don't want to see outside storage." I understand that, but we think this is an ideal location for it. If you can kind of, I'm going to back up for a second, see if I can find another. So the area that's yellow is the proposed site. So it's bordered on, you know, one side by the railroad tracks, and then on the other side by our existing industrial. And then it has some residential that is on two sides of it. But we really have pretty strong buffers against the residential. And these are not going to be, you know, a 10,000-foot building in industrial terms is not that big, that's relatively small. And the industrial, and the outside storage areas for these, they might be an acre or so per building. It kind of, it can vary. But this is, we've got planned eight buildings in this development scheme there. That's an aerial that shows the, how buffered it is from the adjoining parcels. These are some other typical buildings. Those are the main things we wanted to bring to you tonight and let you know our thoughts. We think that's a, it's a good use. We've done this with, we probably have six or seven other buildings like this. And there's a, there's a real demand for them. And we think it's probably a great opportunity to use that land, increase the tax base, obviously, bring some jobs Indian Trail. I think there's some good things for the, for the city as well, obviously, for the redevelopment too. And be happy to answer any questions if that's appropriate or needed.
Just for those who may be watching on social media or something like that, I know we know where Radiator Road is, but will you give just a description so that if there's somebody watching it doesn't know?
In terms of location?
Yes, sir.
Well, I would, you know, I was thinking about that. I mean, I'm kind of directionally challenged, but to me, it, I feel like it's south of the town center. And Radiator Road is actually a pretty long road back into our property. Duke, Duke Energy has bought a parcel right in front of ours.
Toffman Row Road.
Yeah, Toffman Row. It's north of Sun Valley, south of town center.
About a half mile west of the liquor store.
Yeah, yeah, about a half mile from like Sun Valley.
On the right-hand side, yeah, by that. And there's a new storage facility there.
New storage facility's right on the corner. So there's a storage facility, then there's some vacant land, that's what Duke owns, and then there's our property.
Right, I'm liking the fact that you guys want to bring, you know, light industrial buildings to Indian Trail. And it's out of the way, you know, I think it's a great spot.
Thank you.
It's tucked back in there, and it, you know, for reference too, for anybody listening, it's, we're directly across the CSX tracks from the Harris Teeter Distribution Center, 74.
Do you have sewer? I mean, I mean, have you, I mean?
We have sewer, we do not have confirmation from the county on capacity yet, which...
Okay, Brandy, do you have any answers on that one? I didn't mean to, but I'm just curious.
Sure, so there's sewer available to the site, but obviously, they'd have to get in line for the limited capacity that's still available. So no guarantee on sewer?
It's still available there.
So there's, there's, there's lines, but you still have the overall capacity issue. This should be 12 Mile Basin. 12 Mile Basin is in better condition than the Crooked Creek. So also with the light industrial, the sewer, the flows, the daily flows are a lot less than if it were residential or high-volume commercial.
I find something unique about what you guys do and fascinating is that you're losing a tenant that is how big? A couple 100,000 square feet tenant there, and you're looking about building more? I need to get in your business, whatever you're doing. That's pretty, that's pretty strong right there. I'm pretty confident.
Either that or kind of crazy, I'm not too, not too sure which one. But I would tell you that, no, we do, we never like to lose a tenant, especially a big tenant like that. But the other side of it is, the market is really pretty healthy right now for demand. So we feel like we, in our world, if we can backfill a space in less than a year, then that's, that's okay. So it'll take us a while to do that, but we kind of expect that.
Gotcha, gotcha. Dennis?
You might remember when you were here three years ago, my grandfather owned that property. And I think I told you I'm still mad he sold it. We called it Red Hill. So anyway, it's, I'm very familiar with the property. It's tucked away back there, nobody sees it, and I can't see any reason why, you know, some outside storage wouldn't be appropriate. I'm assuming it still be, won't classify as light industrial.
You know, I think we're going to get some direction from, from planning on that.
It's a conditional use?
Yeah, so we would, we would do it as a CZ light industrial, and that would help with the outdoor storage, but also require some screening as well.
I'm not surprised that you got a lot of contamination because of the 70s, way there especially, had a huge explosion there. A lot of people got burned, killed, and they had some pretty wicked chemicals that they were using back there at the time. So I know that they stayed there for a while when they were off, and they knew that was...
Yeah, they have.
There's no more questions. Gentlemen, thank you for coming and letting us know what's going on back there. So, because people will ask, and now we'll look more intelligent, so we'll, which is good. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, part of the developer workshop is to receive your comments. We normally like to give you about a week to send stuff to Brandy and I. I will tell you that Brandy will be sending out an email to you in the next day or so, because there's several moving pieces which will be good for you to know. So look for that, and just any kind of comments you want to provide back to us, we'll share with these gentlemen.
One more question. I take it you're airspace tenant there, manufacturing airspace parts, for what aircraft?
I think you're a little closer to it than I am. So they, this division of this company, they refurbish aircraft parts for small craft, for some of the big players. If you go in there, they'll take, they're like these electronic modules that come out of these planes, and they refurb them and then put them back in service. Yeah, they certify them. They've got another division in Rock Hill that does engines, but this operation is not engine, it's more electronics.
Yeah, that's what it says, this is number of aircraft that's in the air. Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and I think if everything looks good, I think we'll, we'll need Brandy's blessing, I think, too.
Yeah, looks good so far.
Hear what she's got to say about it, but anyway, thank you.
Yes, no, we appreciate that. We've talked with planning, and they certainly suggested us come to you all, let you know what we were thinking, just to help gauge everyone's interests or concerns, if any. So we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, can I get a motion to close the special meeting?
I'll give a motion to close.
Close the special meeting?
All in favor? Unanimous. Young man, would you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? You can come, come right up here, if you would. What is your name?
Riley.
All right, Riley.
Please throw me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, warning nation, under God, the indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We'll all remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you all for being here tonight. Beautiful day today. Would like to tell you about some upcoming events. I think we really have only one before our next meeting. The Love Bug Dance. Hayden, are you in, are you in here? So that is, is that generally with your daughter?
Yeah, so it's, you know, not everyone has a dad, not everybody has a daughter, but trying to be more inclusive, break down every family out.
Very good. Well, I know that's a, big crowd for that usually?
Yeah, we sell out every year.
Well, that's great. And again, thank you for all you do. I'd like to mention too, it's over, the Harlem Wizards, very successful. I know the Rotary Club put on the Harlem Wizards, and y'all sold out the high school again, Sun Valley High School. And I guess, can we say you raised about $15,000 for scholarships for high school? So do you give that out in three scholarships, or?
To be determined, but yeah, all that money will go back out to the community.
Very good, very nice. We also had a winner, I think a repeat winner of the slam dunk contest. Mr. Guy, would, I think you have some, a picture of, here, if you, you can either bring it up front, or let me bring it up front, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I'd like to share something with everybody. It's a slam dunk picture of Jim Watowich, and he's a budget blazer. And there's a picture of the mayor saying, "You got this, Jim." And you can see him slam dunking the budget. And, Jim, that needs to go on your desk. For a repeat winner of the slam dunk contest. So thank you.
That's why I was late today, I was trying to get this picture fitted into the frame good, so you got it, so you can put it on your desk.
Jim, you show the pictures you're walking by to everybody, so.
He's still limping from that dunk.
Yeah, he's still limping from that dunk.
He turned an ankle.
I've got something here, I just want to read, I got a letter, every now and then I get a letter, and I got a letter at the last council meeting that was, I guess, sent to town hall from Owen Higgins. And I think Owen's like five years old, or maybe even younger than five years old. But this is the letter. He actually wrote it on this side, and then turned around and wrote it on this side, and it was folded like this. And I wanted to read it, and I much appreciate it. And I'm going to read it exactly how he wrote it, and he didn't spell the words right, didn't even spell my name right, but he, I knew what he meant. He says, "Dear Cone, I love Indian Trail, North Carolina. I mean, just look at it. It's truly great, and I would want 10 million of them. I'm, I'm being true to all of the town council. I have never seen a town like this. I can't even tell you how much I love it." Thank you for, for being, it says, no, wait a minute, "For a great and the best mayor," of course, I really like that, "of all time." And that's not why I'm reading it, but that's what, but anyway, David Cone, and C-O-N-E. But I wanted to thank Owen. And Owen, I thought, was going to be here tonight, and I said I would read it, so he's not. And I actually thought his grandmother might be here tonight, and she said she would, so I hope nothing's happened. But I thought, I think that was very sweet and, and nice. So I wanted to get that out too. Thank you, Owen. And I know council appreciates you also for saying nice things. That brings us to agenda additions and deletions. Does anybody have any? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
All in favor? Unanimous? Very good. We have some presentations tonight. We have Black History Month proclamation. And let me get to that. Okay. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements and a time for recognizing the central role of Black Americans in our history. And whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our collective economic, culture, social, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls for our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideas. And whereas the town of Indian Trail recognizes and values the significant contributions and advances that Black Americans have made and continue to make to American society, and recognize the quest of Black Americans for equal opportunity and freedom from discrimination in America. And whereas the town of Indian Trail is proud to honor the history and contributions of Black Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. And now therefore, I, David Cone, mayor of Indian, the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, on behalf of the council, in recognition of Black, Black Americans, past and present in our community, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month in the town of Indian Trail, and commend its observance to all citizens. Dooley proclamation, the 13th day of February 2024. Okay. With that being said, we have new business, the local house, Ms. Heather Klaus, come on up.
Thank you. Let me open it up. Thank you, guys. I know you're probably familiar with me, I'm owner of Kimberly's Place, but we opened another location with a lot of our wonderful women-owned businesses. They are all local. We have what we consider to be called Local House. It is just the name of the property itself, but we are encompassing three local women-owned businesses. That is Kimberly's Place as the gift shop and a local event company that we use. And then we have Stella Rye. They are new as well, and they will be coming a different day, they just couldn't all make it tonight. So they'll come separately as individual businesses as well. But Stella Rye is a full pub and cafe that is local on the back property of Local House. It houses different events. We're working with different nonprofits through all three of these businesses. They house different, like you can host a birthday party there, you can host baby showers, different events, ladies' night, karaoke. It's been really great. All of the local residents within the area is like, "Oh, my God, we can walk here. We don't have to cross any major streets." So we've had a lot of great recognition from our residents. And the other piece on that property, so Stella Rye has a little bit different hours on that section. They're open right now winter hours from 4:00 to about 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. during the week sometimes, and then weekends is usually open to about 10:00 p.m. You can host private events as well. And then in the main house, you'll see when you drive by, it's at 1507 Waxall Indian Trail Road, literally just right past New York Pizza and Pasta in that four-way intersection. It's on the left-hand side. The gift shop hours are the same as Kimberly's Place, so it's the same as the original location, same as there. We're just able to house pretty much twice as many small businesses. So we're able to employ and give more financial support to local small businesses through our second location. And then we have Sassy Design Salon and Boutique. So we now have a full hair salon in there as well. And that is my best friend of nine years. She holds a license for over 15 to 20 years in hair service. So we have a full functioning men's, children's, kids', hair extensions, and her appointments are by appointment only. So she doesn't have any basic hours. You guys can come in at any time that we're open. It's a full coffee and tea in the main house of Local House. And then you can come in, and we're also working on additional exciting news. Obviously, we work with nonprofits, that's our main goal through our business, but now we'll be able to house more for our residents. So we're excited to be here, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any, any questions? No? All right, thank you, Heather.
You got that presentation.
What now? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Heather, we have something, as you know, to give you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Your new business, Heather has Kimberly's Place also.
Yes. If you want to go up, I'll get your picture with them. Oh, you did put the zip shop, okay.
Okay, finance update, Mr. Wanowitz.
Dennis, I owe you one. It's good to be before you. This is the first time I've been at the podium since the new election, so Clarence, I wanted to welcome you. I know you'll be great. Crystal and Todd, congratulations on four more years. The citizens knew, the citizens know a good thing when they see one. Tom, Dennis, good luck. We're glad you're here, I look forward to working with you. Mayor Cone, I'll be completing eight years in March. And I remember the first day I walked in, you gave me a warm welcome, and you've been supporting me ever since. I appreciate that, and you're a great mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
And before I get to the numbers, I want to thank Mike. I've been in the business 28 years. Last three and a half years with Mike has been a real pleasure to my career. So Bobby, let's go to the numbers. What I'm going to give you now is halfway through the year, our results. We're going to start with revenues. So the first, the top revenue there, 89%. We just got January's in, we're now at 103%. So we're plus 300,000 a budget, that goes right to fund balance. Very, very efficient tax department down there. I want to tell you a quick story. Somebody came in the last day, January 5th, to pay their taxes. It was a company, $8,000 tax bill. It was about 4:30, if I remember correctly. And he came in, he had a credit card. So the credit card company is 2.95%. We don't get it, it's a convenient fee that goes to the credit card. Town doesn't benefit from it. So Susan downstairs said, "Go home and get a check." He says, "I live 45 minutes away." She said she'd wait. That's the kind of dedication, wasn't even a benefit to the town. And I love that kind of stuff. I don't pay late charges. Somebody's folks get mad at me sometimes. I say, "Call the vendor. When it happens, tell them I'll pay them 10 days early next time." So you have a finance director that doesn't like to pay too easily. Sales tax, another big one. We're running about 6% ahead. If that holds up, we'll add about another 300,000 to the fund balance. Again, Union County, based on AdVorum, which I have, I'm not really crazy about, but... Next is investment income. If I take it down there, about halfway down the page, we're at 88%. And we had to increase that budget. The 920 is up by 175,000 because we are now covering the right-of-way crew. And now I'd like to defer two minutes to the gentleman from Anadale. Adam, would you like to talk about that at all? About the crew?
We're in the middle of trying to hire right now.
So we had a crew budgeted for six months, and equipment and all that, so you're going to have a beautiful 74 at some point. You don't want to add anything else, Adam? Okay. So investment income, I'm projecting that's going to, we're running about 130,000 a month. So again, our revenues are in good shape, folks. Last one I'll mention is planning revenue. Ms. Brandy always brings that in, budget of 100, she's at 153 halfway through the year. So she always brings it home. Next page, Bobby, if we could. Now, expenses, again, the town manager, senior accountant, Gaddy, and myself, we meet every quarter to review the results. We want to make sure there's nobody out of whack, if there's any surprises, we want to tackle it then. So I'm happy to report right now, everyone is either on budget or better than budget. And some of the numbers are higher, but I'll give you an example. Carrie's budget, she pays the insurance annually, so the whole insurance is paid. Over 105,000 for our property liability insurance, that's paid in month one. So that's why it's skewed a little bit. But we meet with everybody, everybody's paid, sheriff's paid full in July. We use our ARPA $10 million exclusion on that. Take a look at engineering. Kind of in the middle of the page there. We pay the million there, we pay that in July, so that's three-fifths of our commitment to O'Monroe Road. Paid, two more payments due. And I think there's some trees down on 74, somebody said. Not 74, on... So our next debt falls off in 2028, but fully budgeted, fully paid. Next, please, Bobby. Quickly, the Pell Bill Fund. So the Pell Bill Fund, the top line there, our revenue is up by about 130,000. That's the money we get from Raleigh, and that's based on 75% population, 25% town roads. So we are growing, folks. That's what that's telling me. We're up plus 130,000. I talked with the engineer, our five-year plan of 15 million is in place and in process. Stormwater fund, again, there's growth there. We're about, we're already at 88%. January came in, we're over our budget already, so that tells me a lot of new houses, a lot of new building permits. Indian Trail is growing. Councilman Barber oversees this fund. Just for your information, Clarence, it's $53 for the average house, $41 for a commercial. It's based on 2,060 square feet. For example, Walmart has 383 ERUs, so, but again, halfway through the year, we're in good shape. Last slide, Bobby, I'll show, and this basically, I show it every quarter. This is how we compare to other towns, our size, and the green bars, that includes the fire tax too, because the other ones, I'm trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison. Mike, you want to add anything?
Just very quickly, I'll echo what Jim said about our staff, particularly our finance staff. Every week, Jim and I sit down to sign checks, it's typically on Thursday, and Jim is empowered that if something doesn't look right, or we need to do a little bit more tweaking on the invoice, he's very good about pointing that out, and we work together with the department heads on it.
Jim, would you step back up to the podium? Is there any questions for Jim? I have one, if anybody does it. Jim, Jim, over here. That's how you look at that, that way. You said this was our third payment to the, was it NCDOT?
Yes, sir.
So there's two more, and so there's two more million dollars that we're going to pay. And is there a certain time we do that? Did we just do it?
We pay every July.
It's July that we pay that. So are we doing another one in this July?
Yeah, July 24 will be payment number four.
And then it'll be the fifth, and then we'll be done.
Correct.
Someone asked me, and I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure, we're not, we don't have any other monies that we're paying NCDOT. I mean, this is it, as far as Monroe Road on that project.
Todd got some, Todd gets some valuable permits and stuff like that, but.
Todd, it's what?
We've got more money.
We've got more money.
On Old Monroe Road.
Yeah, you still have to pay for betterments.
Okay.
And so, yeah, for the additional five feet of sidewalk, because we want a multi-use path out there, you have to pay for that, and then we're having to come back to you in the budget workshop to talk about traffic signal poles and stuff. If we want to do just wood poles out there, or we want to make it look a little bit nicer and do metal poles. So I'll have all that before you get to budget workshop.
Okay, but that, that's more of a, pretty, whether or not we want it to look pretty or not.
Correct. The sidewalk is something we asked, you know, years and years ago, so we, we really can't back off that, but the traffic signal thing, if y'all don't want to, you know, do those betterments, that's up to y'all.
Well, I have a question about the sidewalk.
Yes, yes, sir.
Who is responsible for the sidewalks? Is the NCDOT building those?
No, no, we maintain them. That Pell Bill Fund is for sidewalk maintenance, too. It's not just for our streets.
I have a resident question about the sidewalks.
Okay.
I don't know if everybody on council got that same email, but are we responsible, is it our decision on what size sidewalks and what goes there, or is that an NCDOT?
We, as a town, can request larger sides, larger side sidewalks, like width-wise, when an NCDOT project comes here. They have a sidewalk policy, meaning they have to put at least sidewalk on one side of the road. The town has to request more than that, if we want it.
Okay. We can, or if anybody else wants to ask, Todd?
On the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Can we adjust the plan?
Give me an example of why.
Well, I mean, you know, the, she was asking about the necessary, is it necessary to have sidewalks on both sides of the super street, you know?
Well, you want sidewalks on both sides, especially in a commercial district or residential district area. I mean, you want to have that, especially on that road, because you don't want the crossover or something like that, just to get somewhere. So I would encourage both sides of the road to have sidewalk. Now, at the end of a project, you know, you can manipulate that if you want to, but again, once they extend that project, which they could do in the future, they're going to extend that sidewalk. So eventually sidewalk's going to be there eventually down the road. It's just, it's just based on timing at that point.
They're talking 10-foot sidewalks. Why in the world do we need 10-foot wide sidewalks?
Because when the towns and the county got together years ago, you know, the Caroline Thread Trail? All right, so that's a, a kind of a statewide, nationwide program. And so the county did a study of that, and where the towns wanted those Caroline Thread Trails. Where our main Caroline Thread Trail is Monroe Road. So that multi-use path is our Caroline Thread Trail that we, that goes through Monroe, connects Monroe and Stallins to us. So it goes through Stallins, Stallins getting 10-foot on their side of the track with that project, and then if they ever extend it, you know, Monroe's going to request 10-foot as well, when it goes into Monroe. So that's the reason why.
That's crazy, 10 feet. I mean, are you going to have a herd of people going down it?
Well, it's, it's, again, it's a multimodal concept in the sense that you won't, we want cyclists not to be on the roads, we want them to be on the sidewalk, so you want to have enough width for, for the pedestrian walk and a bicycle to be able to ride. So they encourage that, DOT encourages that, so it's a program that's not going away, as far as that goes.
So the additional sidewalk falls to our cost?
Correct, yeah, because, because the town requested that whenever, years and years ago. Now, I mean, that was my part of my.
And is it funded yet, or is that what we're going to discuss in the budget? Was that what?
Well, it's designed, so, I mean, it'd be hard-pressed to go back and say, we don't want it at this point, especially when it's a Caroline Thread Trail.
I didn't say I do want, I said, is it funded?
No, it's not funded yet. That's why I'm coming to you at the budget workshop.
I understood what he said. That's, that's going to be part of the budget process.
Correct, right, yes.
That was my question.
Okay.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
So what was that $10 million spent for? I mean.
Well, you're paying out 5 million, and CRTPO is paying out the other five.
Five million, then.
Yeah.
What's the five million for? Just our part?
Our part, yes, because at the time, that was negotiated years and years ago, that, that project was not going to Indian Trail. It was stopping at Stallins, because the traffic counts didn't, didn't justify it. So somebody decided, we want it in Indian Trail, and that's why they, the handshake happened, or whatever happened back then, to say, the town needs to fork out some money if they want it through their town. That's what happened.
And all actuality, what happened is it was a, was it a bond referendum, wasn't it? That was voted on by the residents to, to, it was a $10 million.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the time, so that was voted on by the residents, and that's where, that's where that came.
That's where it got pushed to that point, yes.
Exactly, exactly. And then we've changed that over time, because it actually, it was done to expedite, to make the road move faster.
Correct.
And it did just the opposite, it moved slower instead of faster. And we ought to be well aware of how that works sometimes, as things take a long time to get done, so, anyway.
And if I could add, Mayor, I think, and this might have been before some of you were on council, we had Brett Knaipe here, might be good to get Brett back. I'm having a Zoom meeting with him on Thursday, and one of the things I'm going to have on my list is whether we need to have a community meeting just to bring everybody up to speed. But I think there was one year, Jim, that we suspended payment because they had not made progress on it, and we kind of benefited when we suspended that one payment, because at the time, the interest rates were, were, were pretty high, so we kind of reaped that benefit, but, and I think we've got one more payment on our commitment on a public works facility. Is that right?
One more for Adams Building, yeah, 2 million. We'll have 6.5 million after next time. Right now, it's 4.5 plus interest. So we're getting there on Adams Empire.
Very good. Well, thank y'all. Appreciate you both. Jim, thank you for what you do, my friend. All right. It brings us to public comments. By addressing council, you acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. First on the list is Heather Klaus.
Sorry, I'm the heir of bad news, so wish I was a little more happy about this one, but I think we need to address it. I'm asking for the town council tonight to amend and put a policy out there for our local residents, whether they're a nonprofit or a local business that wants to rent a room here, rent a park, whether it's any size. I'm asking, there's a huge issue right now specifically with nonprofits. As you know, I work with a lot of nonprofits. I've been working with them for several years now, and unfortunately, I wanted this evening to be a better night to be able to announce my exciting news, but I was faced with the dilemma, and there is something right now within the town that there's a lot of favoritism. So specifically, and I've supported the Union West Rotary Club, I have been at their meetings and have gone and supported and sponsored and donated money, but unfortunately, we're giving the Union West Rotary Club a free room every Thursday from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and that is for the last several years. And right now, myself and other businesses or nonprofits are having to follow by a policy that you guys have in place that was updated on March of 2021. In my process, whether I'm a nonprofit or a business, I'm having to fill out this application, wait for this application to be, if I want a fee waiver, I have to wait for the committee, the park committee, to get voted on it, for them to waive a fee for me. And those rooms could range anywhere from $100 to $330 for rooms, from $100 to $1,000 for the park, depending on how much time you use it. The issue tonight that I want to address is, I would love to see this policy revisited and changed, and I would hope that every single nonprofit that is a direct local nonprofit have access to our community town hall. Our taxpayers have paid for this building, and I do not believe that any nonprofit that walks through our door, that we should ever turn away and charge them $330 for a room. So if you can give Rotary Club, which I adore, it's not about the nonprofits, it about, it's about the town's standards and policies that are not being upheld. And I will fight to justice to the end. I don't want to see our local nonprofits go to Monroe, go to Charlotte. It was here. A lot of local nonprofits started here. So we need to keep our local nonprofits here so that our services and our programs and the free financial that we're providing for them, whether it's suicide prevention, mental health, domestic violence, childhood sexual assault, Rotary Club, we need to keep that here. So that's what I ask for tonight during public comments. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Michael Falkenberry.
I believe in proactive planning. Proactive planning is, is wonderful, especially in government, but to worry about an occupancy tax for a hotel that doesn't exist, doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's good to have it on a referendum, especially on a presidential election, but it's not going to be ready in time. The question I have for the councils, why didn't you ask the land developer, why did they build the apartments first instead of the hotel, knowing you had a sewer capacity issue? To this day, I've yet to get an answer. Priorities, the hotel should have been built. A second should have already been built, if that's the focus. They had plenty of time to do so, including the one at Sun Valley, in which the land developer wanted to buy half my neighbor's backyard to make it fit, but he didn't tell you that part, did he? Also, on Monroe Road, what a history. Okay, we have two lanes of potholes now, so when we widen it, we can have four lanes of potholes? I have no faith in NCDOT to keep our word. So far, they have not. Proof is out there right now. First bond referendum passed 2011. 2024, what do we have? Nothing. True, it was supposed to stop at Stallins, but again, DOT went back and revisited the project, they added Indian Trail later. We should have to pay a dime. It went from 10 million to 5 million. 5 million never went to a referendum. Public kind of never had a say in the matter. Also, in regards, my wife and I picked a date for the political forum, September 30th. One date was not available because a business had reserved it, that room, surely how room, had not paid a deposit. That date was September 30th, and the business was Kimberly's Place. Hayden can verify this. We waited, wanted to make sure, didn't want to intervene with anybody else's plans. No deposit was ever made. I don't know how long the room was booked, but no activity was allowed to happen in that room. So again, fighting for something is great, but to be true to your word speaks louder. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Robinson, and I am running for school board at large, so I'm just here to introduce myself to Indian Trail. First of all, I'm married to Tommy Robinson. We have three adult children and two grandchildren. My husband is a native of Union County. We moved here as a family in 2002. My husband is retired from the military. He served 34 years in the Air Force. Because of that, we are active in the American Legion in Unionville, where I'm president of the auxiliary. We're also very active in the VFW in Indian Trail, where I am the trustee and the chaplain of the auxiliary. I am a retired school teacher. I taught for 33 years in North County Public Schools. I taught math to sixth through 12th graders. I taught kids ranging from your at-risk pregnant teens all the way up through your honors high school students. My last job was at Porter Ridge High School, where I helped open the school as a math department chair in 2005. I also served as a testing coordinator my last few years there. For my education, I received a BS in math in 1984. I have my National Board Certification, which I earned in 2000 and renewed in 2010. I also earned my master's in education with a focus on curriculum and instruction. I earned that in 2006. I am running for school board to be the voice for students, parents, and teachers. With my, with my education and my experience, I have a more informed perspective, especially considering there are no retired school teachers or school teachers on the school board at this time. I envision a unified group of students, parents, teachers, staff, and board members working together to meet the needs of our students. I'm committed to opening communication and dialogue among us all, and communication is something I've heard from other people, that it's an issue with school board members. Now, the school board is making decisions to help the students and the teachers that are teaching them. I cannot think of a better resource than someone who has taught in the classroom, who has helped others and trained others that are in the classroom, who has firsthand knowledge of what it's like day after day to be in the classroom. So again, my name is Linda Robinson, and I appreciate your support for school board at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anna Goodwin, Godwin, I'm sorry.
You were right the first time. It's Goodwin.
It is Goodwin.
It is Goodwin.
Well, Anna Goodwin, please come up.
All right, everyone's taller than me. That's not unusual. I'm Anna Goodwin. I'm one of the Union County District Court Judges, and I also happen to be running for, to keep my seat this year during the primary. Fortunately, I have been in Union County now for almost 20 years. I did not grow up here, but my husband did. My husband worked for Sheriff Kathy for over 20 years and recently retired a couple of years ago. a couple of years ago, and is also former military. I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Cox, um, before she even got married. That's, I hate to date us both, um, as a former prosecutor here in Union County, and I owned my own firm, uh, for twelve years before I was appointed to the district court bench last spring. I have spent my entire legal career here in Union County. I have worked in the district courts the entire time I've been here in Union County. Unfortunately, I believe the governor and also my colleagues have realized the experience that I bring to the bench, and I would like the opportunity, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak today, to continue representing the entirety of Union County as its district court judge. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anna. Gracie, come on up. Gracie Laney.
Hi, everyone. I'm Grace Laney. Um, I want to thank the town council for everything they've done for our town. They have supported me in all my community service, my nonprofits, and just really helped me out, and especially my school. And I brought some Valentine Day cards for y'all and some sweets.
For you. We're so happy Valentine Day.
Thank you, Grace. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we have a history, um,
Thank you.
During the parades, throwing out candy, and she would intentionally hit me in the head. And I thought it was funny, because I would, I would do the same thing as she did when, well, as an adult even. No, she's awesome good. She really is.
Gracie, are you done?
Yes.
Well, Gracie, thank you so much.
Thank you, Grace.
You're very sweet and charming, and thank you for all the things that you do for your, uh, around town. You've done a lot of, uh, great things, and, um, just nice having you. Always good seeing that smile. Take this home, put it on my refrigerator. Okay, uh, that brings us to council feedback. Any, uh, council feedback? Mr. Gay?
I'd like to make, uh, council feedback on the nonprofit. Not all, uh, nonprofits are created equal. There are nonprofits that are fraternal, that, uh, are strictly for nonprofit purposes. They take no income. They work solely out of, uh, uh, care and love for the community, and, uh, there's no benefits, nothing paid, and they do it, uh, just to help people. Then there are other nonprofits that, uh, they, it's structured where they get paid, uh, they have incomes, they have, uh, some of them have benefits. One of the, my favorite ones is the United Way, that, um, uh, they pay their top people millions and millions of dollars. They fly around on corporate jets, and, uh, it's come out that it's been extremely abused. And so those folks are classified, uh, differently in our UDO by all other organizations, uh, totally differently than the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, um, even the Salvation Army, which is the most, um, I think conservative and pay their people the least amount of money, would not qualify here, Indian Trail, for a free room, because they do pay their people, they do supply certain benefits. And so, uh, if someone comes in and shows that they're not being paid for what they do, then certainly they would be qualified for a free room. Um, there's been exceptions made where they'll, uh, these organizations who do pay their people, uh, can, uh, apply for a, a room and get it for free. Typically, they'll do it a couple of times, as from my understanding, and then that's it. But, you know, we do have a lot of private, uh, nonprofit organizations, and, uh, you know, we, uh, we like to at least spread it around to these folks and not let one abuse the privilege over others. So I suggest that we keep it the way that it is, um, and, and not, um, be partial to anyone, one individual or group.
Thank you. You done? Mr. Barber?
Thank you, Mayor. Hmm, the, uh, uh, I think we were emailed the policy by somebody, and, um, my thinking was is maybe we should, if we need to put it in writing, that the Rotary and the Lions Club continue the tradition of getting a room free. I, I think that, if we had to, I think that would be a good thing to do. I think there's a primetime group, I won't, they're probably not charged to, we got traditional groups that have been getting a room for free, uh, and we need to put that in the policy. I would certainly be in favor of that. I did notice that the policy only has, um, five waivers a year or something. Is that right? Am I, am I getting that right? And, uh, and, uh,
That's correct.
I, I guess that might make the committee feel a little bit selective. I mean, I'd be interested in increasing that number, maybe like one a month, twelve for the year. That way, maybe the committee wouldn't feel as restrictive. So that's kind of my thinking on it, maybe open it up a little bit more for, uh, nonprofits that are doing wonderful jobs here in the community to have more access to the room and not be charged. I mean, that's just my thinking, and I, you know, it's to kind of just open the door more and keep doing what we're doing with the existing people that we have. So that's my thoughts.
All right, so I just wanted to thank Grace. Um, I got a text message as I stepped up here saying, can I bring y'all goodies? So I said, yes, come put your name on the public comments now. But, um, I do want to thank you for coming up here. I want to thank everyone for coming up with the public comments, but thank you. I know it's a lot for a teenager to take time out of their day to come up here, and you do a lot for the community, so I'm really proud of you.
Now, yep. Okay, um, I'd like to say a couple of things tonight. I first would like to, uh, thank Ms. Robinson for coming tonight and, and, uh, telling us about yourself. And, um, um, Ms. Goodwin, I thank you for coming tonight, telling us, it means, means something to me. It means something to me, and I hope it does, everybody in the room that can, can know a little bit about yourself, reason, and, and, uh, maybe tell other people about, about voting, voting for you. So, uh, thanks for coming. Nonprofits are, are real close at my heart. And I, I want to talk for a couple of minutes on, on, on this particular subject. I, I, I don't, I don't really talk about a lot of the, the charities and stuff that would, that I personally have worked on over the years, but raised anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for anything, from people with brain cancer or brain tumors, or the last one that we did is for a family that, um, raised about ten thousand dollars for, uh, a VFW, uh, gentleman whose family needed it. And, um, uh, you do it for the goodness of your heart, and, and that's, that's what you do. But the, the things that I have thought about nonprofits, and a lot of times that we don't really think about is, is, uh, you know, Atrium is a nonprofit. Atrium has ten people that make, and anywhere from a salary of fourteen million dollars to two million dollars as a nonprofit. There's a lot of nonprofits that make a lot of money, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, because they're, they're doing a good thing. But it also can benefit a business to be a nonprofit. You know, people donate money to, uh, nonprofits. And, um, I will say too, the primetime group is not a group of people that rent out the, they're, that, that's a, that is a, uh, that's done by the town, uh, that's like a town program, is it not, Hayden? It's a town program that's set up through the town for, uh, seniors to come down and give them something to do. So that, it's not a group that asks for the thing, it's something that the town offers. But when I think of the Rotary, and I know so many people in the Rotary Club, the difference in, in what the, in, in, you know, I, I don't have a problem at all with the Rotary getting a free room, or the Lions Club getting a free room, is for all the, the, the things that they do. First of all, the, the Rotary, who, which I know very well, they actually pay to be in the club. They don't, they, there's no one in that, um, club that makes a dollar off anything that they do, and they raise thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for the community. So, uh, I wouldn't, you know, I, I, I don't, Heather, I, I appreciate what you say, but the Rotary, uh, is, it's not a business. It's not a nonprofit business. It's just a nonprofit that gives, and I would say a business would be somebody that's making a profit. They, they do not make a profit. And this is, I made a list of some things too, is, is what the Rotary does. It, it assists with both parades, and this includes the Lions Club and some of these things too. Lines a Christmas parade up, judging for the Fourth of July Parade. Financially, it's, uh, it, it contributed twenty thousand dollars to the Veterans Memorial. It, uh, gave fifty thousand dollars to the Crossing Pass Park Amphitheater. Now, this is, nobody in their club making any money, but they donated this to the town for all these things. Crooked Creek Park All-Inclusive Shelter, they gave ten thousand dollars. Every year, they do Back to School Bash, typically, uh, giving two thousand dollars. Scholarships, five thousand dollars annually that they give. They just did the Wizards Basketball Game, and the Wizards Basketball Game raised fifteen thousand dollars. And out of that fifteen thousand dollars, that'll all go to scholarships, or I think it all goes to scholarships for kids getting out of high school. Uh, they contribute, uh, to the Boy Scouts, around a thousand dollars a year for projects and camps. Uh, they do Girls on the Run, recognition for first responders, annual support of Common Heart, Council on Aging, Ramp Funding, uh, Butterfly Garden and Gazebo, donations of durable medical equipment, car seats, school supplies, seminar for tomorrow's leaders, scholarships for leadership academy training, and the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Volunteer services, monthly food packing for Food for Families, quarterly trash collection on Old Monroe Road, ringing the bell at Salvation Army, and, uh, uh, Christmas caroling at nursing homes, tree planting projects, uh, stuffing, uh, Easter eggs for the town, ramp building for the elderly, assistance, uh, with Halloween town events, and international projects in response to national disasters. Uh, support, uh, of Camp Dogwood, this is some of the, the Lions Club, support of both parades, uh, free eyeglasses and doctor visits. They work at the Crime Stoppers, and they do this without one penny of money, uh, or they do this without one person making a dime, and actually, they pay to, to be in, they, they pay to,
You're just making a point, because I, I have three minutes, and now you're able to speak.
Well, listen, it's my time to talk now, okay? So I, I can talk.
It's older than we get to talk as a public, and you're throwing it back at my face.
Point of order. Point of order. And I'm not here to criticize,
You did.
I'm not, and I don't think I did. And if, one more outburst, and, and Heather,
I understand the policy.
Thank you. I, I appreciate, I, I'm not here to criticize. I'm not here to criticize. I'm here to make a point, and I think, I hope the point's well taken. I think there's two hundred and nine, or two hundred and six nonprofits in Indian Trail. Um, I don't, I don't know if that's exactly right. Does anybody, is there over two hundred? Does anybody know if there's over two hundred nonprofits in Indian Trail? There is. Okay, thank you. And many of them make money, and, and I hope they do. Many of them make money, and I hope they do make money. But if, if we gave a room for free to a nonprofit and they asked for it every week, their room would have been full for, for just, and it's not the fact that we're giving it to a nonprofit, as many of them can afford the room. They can afford it. So, anyway, I want you to know there's a difference between the Rotary Club and a nonprofit and the Lions Club, which both, both pay to be in that to give back to the community. So, uh, I ju, I wanted to make that a point. I did, and we'll move on. So, um, brings us to, uh, law enforcement. Andy, come on up.
I've seen everybody adjusting this just by turning it, so I'm hoping it's going to work for me too.
You pull them up.
I'll just, I'll just lean over, how about that? Um, no, first off, I want to say, um, you know, started up here as the captain just a few months ago. Have, since then, have met with you, um, the two of us. I've, uh, had meetings with Mike and Ms. Dees, Ms. Cox, Todd, Hayden, a, a bunch of the folks who work for Indian Trail. And just want to say, I'm looking forward to being here, uh, more so than just as, as the lieutenant, but as the captain. Just excited where the town's going. I'm excited to work with you guys and excited to, uh, to be able to, to make a difference. But with that being said, um, I wanted to introduce Lieutenant Norris. Lieutenant Norris, like I said, was just promoted in December. Uh, he's our new lieutenant here in Indian Trail. Just a little bit about him. Um, he, uh, he wrote this, and she, we were talking about eyeglasses a while ago, I should have brought mine up here with me. But, um, he was, uh, got hired on the sheriff's office in 2011. He started in the jail just like most about, most everybody does. I'm, I'm far enough away. He, um, like I say, spent about two years in the jail, just about like everybody does. Uh, went out on patrol in 2013. While on patrol, he became a field training officer. He also joined our sheriff SWAT team, our SRT. During, um, during that time, that was in 2019, um, he, um, he also became a, um, well, he was promoted to sergeant in 2019, and he was also assigned to the DWI Task Force, or our safe unit. In '21, he was transferred, um, to be the sergeant over our, um, or over our warrant squad. And, um, then like I say, most recently, well, he was also during that time, he was, um, he became a team leader on our SRT. And, um, then finally, here in December, he is promoted to the rank of lieutenant and will be with us, um, trying to fill my shoes. Not going to go there. But, um, he, uh, like I said, he's a great guy. I've worked with him my entire career and, uh, looking forward to what he's going to bring to the table, but wanted to introduce him to you guys, and like I say, please give him a hard time. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Um, Lieutenant Norris, uh, Andy kind of got you there, got me there too. You spent two years in jail. That's great, and still, and still you're, and still you made the jail. That's quite, that's quite something to say. I, I'll say that.
Whether you worked there or just there,
I picked up on that. Great. You spent two, what, two years in, in jail? But, uh, thank you both for, for what you do. Thank you for your service. Looking forward to working with you, Andy. It's, uh, gonna be, gonna be fun. Brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, it brings us, uh, to our first public hearing tonight. By addressing council, you know, as you have read, the town's public comment, this is okay. Um, annexation, annexation 169, uh, General Shell, Ms. Dave, Ms. Dees, uh, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Quickly, um, we haven't had an annexation in a while. This one's fairly simple. So this is annexation 169, and then a zoning map amendment attached to it that you see above. That's simply assigning a zoning designation. The state says we have sixty days to do that, so we're going to go ahead and knock that all out tonight, hopefully. So a little bit about the request. This is a half acre parcel off of Hayes Road. It's currently Union County Highway, um, commercial, and we're just proposing RBD, which is Regional Business District, very similar zoning, just, um, the purple zoning that flanks seventy-four for Indian Trail. Surrounding properties are zoned the same. The applicant is General Shell Brick Incorporated. They were formerly Meridian Brick LLC. And then, so why, why are we doing this little tiny parcel in the middle of this massive property? A little bit of background is that, um, as we talked earlier, we do have a fabulous tax department. They realized that this parcel had not been paying taxes. The more we dug down deeper, um, we sent it over to the Union County Tax Assessor's Office. We felt like it was obviously the intent in that previous, um, annexation in 1994 that it was coming into the town. They felt like it was a little ambiguous and asked us to clear it up. We were a little worried when you go to talk to a property owner about annexing if they don't need your services at the time, um, but I'm very happy to say the folks at General Shell have been amazing to work with. They understood the concept, and they were able to sign the annexation petition. They understood the concept, and they were able to sign the annexation petition to move it forward. So, here's the aerial map showing the property. You've got Highway 74, Honda's across the street. This is the old Brickyard property with Brickyard Road running through it. So, and here you see the commercial, the yellow is that highway commercial with Union County, and then the dark bluish-purple is gonna be the, all the RBD surrounding it. So, we don't really have any other choice other than to put RBD on it. And again, this is the future land use map. I'm just setting this area out to be industrial. And the consistency findings. So, the proposed zoning map amendment's consistent with the following goals of the Comprehensive Plan, economic development goal number one, land use and housing goal number one, and land use and housing goal number six. This rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest, because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in all of these areas mentioned previously. I do have your requested action. I want to apologize for that date on the bottom of January the 23rd. The cancellation of our January 9th meeting caused this to be delayed, because this has several steps in the process. That's all I have for you tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Dennis?
I'm just curious, do they still make brick there, or what are they doing?
They do not. There's about a million bricks on the site that they are looking at potentially selling and removing. The story that I was told is that this was acquired to help eliminate competition, so that another Brickyard didn't come in. And so, it's been sitting there for some time. They do, they have expressed some interest in selling. This would be a really exciting piece of property for the town, a real flagship development, potentially, especially right on the edge of our limits. It could potentially be something really special, but there are some limitations on that sale, one of them being that there's some mining rights that are still tied to the property.
Any other question? Brandy, thank you. If there's no other questions, there's no one signed up for public hearing, so I'd like to open and close, or get a motion to open and close the public hearing.
Motion to open and close public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous. And if there's no council deliberation, I know Brandy asked for questions, can I get a motion and a vote?
I'll make a motion to approve annexation ordinance number 169 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Very good. Thank you. Ms. Deese, are you gonna do the next one, or?
That was all I had for you. You got the pretty maps, but we can go over it again if you would like, or if you have additional questions.
We have to do the rezoning.
Right. So, you can open, open the public hearing, close the public hearing.
Okay. ZM 2023156, zoning destination for annexation 169?
Yes. Sorry about that.
All right. Are we ready now?
Yes. So, you can, you can, so my presentation included both of them.
So, you're done. You're done. There's nothing, there's nothing else you're gonna do.
I was trying to be brief.
All right. Same thing, but there's no, there's no one that has signed up for anything on this either, right?
So, I'll make a motion to open and close public hearing.
Okay, good. Well, we, on our sheet, we have.
For that as well. Oh, yeah. See, there are two different things on our sheet.
I'm just reading it right off the sheet. I got you. I got you. All right. Go ahead.
And then I'll make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency findings for ZM 2023-0156 as read into the record by staff.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does that bring us to old business?
I think we need one more thing. Do we need to read that last?
Are we done, Brandy, or?
I think you need to do the rezoning. Do the rezoning. I did skip one of the motions. I apologize.
Okay. What now?
I missed one of the rezoning motions.
Okay. That's good. I'm just going off this sheet right here, so, go ahead.
I need to make a motion to approve ZM 2023-0156 rezoning request as presented.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Now, we're done. Thank you. That brings us to old business. Adam? ARPA update.
Good evening. I don't have any fancy slides for y'all tonight, so we'll make this really short. We have talked on and on about ARPA and where we're at with different things. Just last week, we had a conversation in our internal ARPA meeting. Todd is wrapping up the FY23 Stormwater ARPA list of projects that should be wrapped up in the next month or so. Still in design for some additional projects to come out of that, and to be able to be used with those remaining ARPA funds. As we look at ARPA-enabled funds for FY23, I'm glad to announce to y'all that two of the three fire trucks are here. They are at the vendor's location. Later this week, we will be taking a check to pay the second half of those two trucks off. When we do that, we will actually put eyes on the trucks, and actually be able to see that they are here. They will probably be delivered the next couple of weeks to the actual fire departments themselves. It's our hope that they could be here before Toucha Truck, so that Hayden can have two great big old fire trucks sitting out there at Toucha Truck. As we get, that's really about the only thing that's left in FY23, access for the Emerald Woods Waterline, but y'all know that's not a project that we are managing, that's being managed by Union County. As we look at FY24, that's the projects that we are working on right now. We have two organizations that we, that have yet to expend any funds. We have four that have expended all of their funds, and the others are somewhere in the middle of that process. We are actively working on all of those projects to get all those funds spent. We go into FY25, that's the budget year we will start talking with y'all about relatively shortly. During that budget process, we would like to talk a little bit about the 1.8 million that's been set aside for transportation, and how that, how we want to use that, or what kind of projects we potentially want to use that on. Lastly, the only thing I'll say is that we were gonna ask for a motion to open up a call for projects. We're gonna push that off by a couple of weeks, just to give us a little bit more time internally to finish a little bit more of the projects that we have existing on the books right now. So, we'll look to open up a call for projects for FY25 funds, which will be about $220,000 of ARPA-enabled dollars. Open up that call for all of March. That'll give us time for about two months to get information up and ready before July rolls around. Any questions? I told you it'd be short.
I have two quick, one quick question. Which two fire trucks?
Henby Bridge and Stallings.
Henby Bridge and Stallings. Got those two. Anything on the Morris Park Waterline?
Nothing I've heard. Okay. I have not heard anything in the last couple of days. I do know that Union County is actively discussing it at their budget meetings that they are having, and how to program it into their funds with the county commissioners.
So, when do you, do you think maybe there'll be any word on any of that?
You're good.
I think Councilmember Barber has his hand up. He may have something to offer.
On the water line, is that just a funding for the design, or is that funding to do the project?
So, right now, we only, for us right now, we only put the funds in for the design. The 1.8 that we talked about, that right now has kind of been earmarked for transportation, that would be what we would be looking at if the county decides to fund the project, 50% of the project. We would need to move some of that previously allotted 1.8 potentially over to fund that design portion, or to fund that construction portion.
So, their conversation is to fund?
Their conversation is for 50%, 50% of the entire project, not just design.
Mr. Mayor, last we heard, they were trying to put it on their CIP, get it on their CIP. They've had a meeting or two. We can reach out tomorrow and get y'all an answer on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I would think that it's happening just through their budget process, so just like y'all, they have to have a budget ready by July.
Okay. So, it may be until?
It may be a couple of months before we get a final answer.
I just want to kind of get that out there, so, you know, to the question be answered.
Mr. Mayor, let me add one thing about the fire trucks. Part of our agreement with the fire departments, they will be responsible for the registration and any road tax. Adam has notified all three fire departments to remind them of that. All three fire departments said they are good to go, so.
Good to go. Very good.
This has been a long project, and we look forward to getting it done.
All right. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
That brings us to new business. Mr. Wanawitz.
Yeah, this is my first, I wanted to, I already did that. I was gonna welcome. Now, this is a solid strategy that we came up with. We get rental income from the new property we purchased. We get about $3,300 a month. Retroactive, back to July, about $23,000. What we want to do is earmark these funds in a separate account for our, hopefully, future community center. So, what we're gonna do is, and so we'll deposit this money in a separate account, and at some point in the future, we'll have to do a resolution, a capital project, if we ever go forward with that. But this will be, we're ceding the money, we're getting it started. Every month, we get $3,300, and I think Ms. Brandy's working on additional rental income. So, we'll just look for your approval to allow me to pop a new account. All these monies will go in there.
Any questions?
I just want to say, it sounds like a slam dunk.
Oh, boy. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve establishing an account for the rental income retroactive to July 2023, with the accumulated funds to be used for a future community center.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you, Jim. All right. Selection of NCLM voting delegate, Mr. McCorran.
Okay. We are a member of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. I think several of you are going to the conference. Encourage all of you, if possible. Part of that is that you need to designate a voting delegate, because at the business meetings, there's typically things that come up that we need to vote on. So, we have an item on your agenda tonight to designate a voting delegate. I think we are also supposed to have an alternate delegate. I reached out to the director and have not heard back from her. So, what I would suggest is to take your motion and appoint a primary voting delegate, and if so required, also appoint an alternate delegate.
Can we nominate who we?
Sure.
I nominate Chris, will be followed.
Okay. Is the primary?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you also like to?
And also Clarence Alsobrooks is the.
Alternate, if so needed.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous.
Good.
Well, that was quick and good. I like that.
Okay. The next item we've got is entitled Cemetery Sign. I had a conversation with Councilmember Barber, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, and he, he'd asked me about a cemetery sign over on Park, and it's gotten turned up missing. We don't know who put the sign up, who took it, why they took it, or when they took it. So, Mr. Barber wanted to know if we would be willing to put a sign up, just letting people know where the cemetery is. It's a nice cemetery. Our plans are, right now, that once Indian Trail is complete, we're gonna be putting a wayfinding with a more permanent presence. But if it's agreeable to the council, we could put a sign up that's kind of a temporary sign for the next year or two, until we get a permanent sign up, and that would be part of the Indian Trail project. So, you know, if there's no objection, then we could spend up to $1,000 to put a sign up. I don't know if Councilmember Barber has any comments on that or not.
Like, that sounds great.
Any comments on that? Is the cemetery full? I mean, is it? I mean, you know what I'm asking.
It is full.
It is full. So, it's not like anybody's gonna be actually looking for it anyway, in all probability, but go ahead.
I think it's full from being sold, but it's not full as far as bodies.
Oh, I got it. Okay.
That's a good way of putting it.
All right. There you go. All right. Thank you. All right. Well, that, we don't need to vote on that, do we?
I can take that as consensus, and we'll operate with that.
We're good. We're good. Okay. Thank you, Mike. That brings us to discussion, no, pavement condition ratings, Mr. Hunsinger.
Mayor, council, I wanted to let y'all know about this first, before we put it out to the public. It'll be on our website. But, yeah, as you know, we did a pavement condition survey a couple of years ago. Unfortunately, this has kind of dragged on longer than I anticipated, but we've been doing some manipulation of interactive map that the consultant started, and we're just, trying to make it simpler for the public to be able to use and understand. So, I'm just gonna run, run through it just real quick. Hope it pops up. Cross your fingers. And then, once I talk about this, I'm gonna update you on our resurfacing contracts, real So, if you look on the screen, so, it's just like anything else, green is good, red is bad. So, as you can see throughout the town, a lot, most of our roads that we own, granted, these are roads we own, there's no other roads, no private, no state, that's color-coded. So, most of them are green, as you can tell. Now, we did put in, we have a resurfacing contract out right now. They're gonna start next month, but we went ahead and put those roads as a hundred, because again, once we update them, they go straight to a hundred. Hundred means great, just like grade school, hundred's good, zero's bad. So, really, you go in here, basically, I'll just do a quick rundown, you pick a street. Anybody got any ones that want to pick?
Any trail road.
Any trail road? No, you don't pick that one. That's bad.
Yeah.
As you can see, it's in a purple. But we'll click on it. It's not a problem. All right. So, you'll have a box that pops up, and basically tells you, street, you know, Indian Trail, obviously the road name, designation, it's a road, you know, it could be lane, it could be street. Powell Bell, again, is IT. Rating is a five right now. And then, road length, and mileage, and road length, and linear feet. And again, these are ratings per block section. They don't rate the overall road. You don't get an average. You can do that on your own. All you gotta do is click four blocks, and do the average, and have some fun with it if you want to. But the only other thing, really, again, pops up on the field is, I mean, you've got base maps, you can do, you know, aerials, whatever. You can go in here, and that basically gives you the rating system, shows you what the colors are. And basically, there's like a useful tool over here where you can drop down, and if you want to like circle a whole, or, what do they call it, lasso, lasso a whole subdivision, and want all those streets to pop up, it'll, they'll pop up, and you'll see all the ratings as far as poor and everything on this side. So, again, very simple. We wanted to make it simple, and, you know, I'm sure we're gonna get questions from citizens once they start really messing with it, and that's great, and we'll be happy to answer them when the time comes. Any questions about the map?
Did you see something Maggie did?
Yeah, right. Yeah, the consultant kind of started, but Maggie's been doing it. She's kind of, she's our GS guru for the engineering department, and she's done a good job. And again, she's, I made her make it more simpler. I mean, they had some nice fancy graphics, but again, it really wasn't giving you any data, and so, it's like, come on, let's just make it simple. So, that's what we did. Yes, Todd?
In that right-hand corner, could you explain that PCI category? Is that just an example, or is that?
Well, yeah, I think, I think I might have hit close to that road, but Sudbury Lane, PCI's a 24, so obviously, it's in bad condition, because it's, it's an elf, more or less, yeah. All right. All right. Moving on. So, again, wanted to just give you an update. All right. So, this is your CIP plan. Again, this was approved a while back. It lists your FYs, how much we're gonna spend, the funding sources. And again, we've aggressively, or you have aggressively approved a three million a year plan. And that contract starts this year. This is the first three million. And again, it was, it was approved in 2223, but we, just so you know, we allow the contractor to start when he is comfortable starting. We don't put dates in contracts, because you force an asphalt contractor to do something in a time period, and he's dealing, he's juggling other projects, you could cause yourself to get a, you know, what I call is, they have A, B, C, and D crews. You could get a D crew. We don't want a D crew. So we try to let the contractor schedule how he sees fit with his, all his projects he's got going on as it is. So as long as he gets done in the next FY, we're happy. So that's what he's doing right now. He's going to start in March, be done in June with the previous contract, as far as that goes. So anyway, so that's it. What I want to do is, and I'll bring this to budget workshop, my plan is to come back to y'all and do the next pavement conditioning, because this one was done actually in 2020. So it's been three years. That's what we want to do. We want to do, at least get two contracts in place, see what the ratings are changing, right? You know, at 2020, you were at 63 overall. You have jumped 10 points already with one contract. Obviously, I think that's going to continue. So we're going to be at an 80 within three years, which was what I was hoping. And so I think we can maybe possibly come back down and be not too aggressive in the last couple of years, not have to spend three million a year. I mean, that's, that was the hope. We want to spend 15 million in five years, but we wanted to upgrade, keep our roads at an 80. I'm hoping we can back down and save a little bit of those funds for other projects. So that's the goal. So these are the roads that's happening here in the next few months. Again, aggressive contract, and again, this wasn't part of the five-year, this was the previous contract. It was for two, two something, I can't remember the number, I apologize, it was over $2 million.
Did you say they're, this is, they're due to be resurfaced this spring?
Yeah, yeah, they're starting, yeah, they're starting in March. So again, 40 streets, and the reason why you can get 40 streets, and a lot of these streets are very narrow streets, short cul-de-sacs-type streets. Brandon Oaks, as you see, most of these roads are either in Brandon Oaks, as you can see on the side, Brandon Oaks, Holly Park, or Indian Trail Park. Indian Trail Park is that stormwater project we just did a while back. We did not overlay the last part of that road. We wanted to sit for a little bit to see how it would react, because we had to open cut that road in several places, did we put pipe covers in, and wasn't the greatest road to begin with, and so it's been sitting out there for a year and a half, almost two years now. It's held up pretty good, and so we want to overlay it now. So that's part of this contract, to get that overlay. So again, most of those, you've got some outlier streets, it's not in those subdivisions, Colton Ridge, for example. We've already did all of Colton Ridge, now we're doing the main drag of Colton Ridge Drive. And that will be totally completed as far as that subdivision goes. All right. And what I'll do is, I'm going to send you an email, I'll see you in these streets, an email, and let, that way y'all know. Also, I'm working with Abby to put this in the newsletter. We're going to put the, you know, let everybody know about the interactive map, and then also list these streets, so everybody knows about the streets. So that'll be out there, too, and I'm sure social media as well. Next is the contract, we're going to start working on advertising here probably in March. Again, we get the contract in place, this FYI, but then we work with the contractor and let him try to pave them whenever he wants to in the next FY. So we can't do 40 streets on this one, because a lot of the Brookhaven is 28, 30-foot wide roads, and they're very long. And so majority of these streets are, pretty much, we're doing all of Brookhaven. So it's very expensive subdivision to get fixed. Callanwood South has some 30-foot wide roads as well, and then we have Vills at Sun Valley. Now, there are a couple outliers. We've got a couple of streets in Brandon Oaks, we've got a finish. Fenwick, Curry, and Wayland View is in that list, but a majority of them are in those three subdivisions. We try to get other subdivisions, but like, for instance, Brook Valley, we try to get Brook Valley in this one, but unfortunately, Brook Valley's very wide streets as well, and unfortunately, it gets expensive. So we're going to push Brook Valley in for next time. So you will see an interactive map, Brook Valley's pretty much all red. Again, we tried to get in this contract, but unfortunately, it's going to have to be the next one. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Always informative and appreciate all you do. You does a lot. Okay. Brings us to the manager's report.
Yes, it does. I had a question about some of the funding for Indian Trail Phase One and Phase Two. We've given you a report on where that money came from, the $5 million for Phase One. There is money set aside in Phase Two, $2 million. At the time, I didn't, I couldn't be for sure about that, so I talked to that man over there that lives and breathes it. So, you know, if we want to go back and get information on that project ordinance, we'll be happy to share it with you and explain it accordingly. Couple of things, I'm not going to read the project update report, I've just made some additional notes that I think are important to you. One of the things, we want to build here at the town, not only a town, but a community. So one of the things that we have started doing, one of you have suggested that we put name tags out front, so anybody that's visiting the meeting, feel free to pick up a hello, I am tag and put your name on it. Makes it easy, particularly if you're meeting new people and you're trying to remember their name. The other thing I want to just touch on very briefly is, what you saw tonight was a result of some investments that you made several years ago. If you remember when we came to you and wanted to do a pavement condition report, instead of having a manual, two people riding in a car making a judgment, we did a computer-based system, so we know exactly where every street sign belongs, what the condition of each road is. And at the time, we only did it for the town streets, and you see the map for the town streets. We had a discussion, we decided not to go and look at the state streets that are in the residential neighborhoods. So as we move forward to the goal of 80, and as you heard Todd say, we've jumped from 63 to 73, one of the questions that's going to come before the council is, do we, what role do we want to take on to begin to start to take on some of those state roads that are in neighborhoods? Because what happened, and I don't know why they didn't do it this way, but the town, back when we had involuntary annexation, the town would annex and not take the neighborhood Personally, as a professional manager, I think if we, you know, we didn't give them a break on their property tax. But you do have some older neighborhoods out there that their streets are maintained by the state, and the state will spend their dollars more on the Highway 74 and the busier streets. And that's going to be a policy question that the council's going to have to weigh in on. Right now, we are taking about five or 10 miles of new streets every year, so you're going to see our street inventory continue to increase. The other thing I'll touch on Todd's map is when he talked about 100 being good, it's just like any asset, your auditors look at that, and they set those streets up on a depreciation, probably a 20-year depreciation. So keeping your streets up are so very, very important, and just like you've done with the budget software, just like you've done with the pavement condition software, I, as your manager, certainly want to thank you for making that investment, trusting the staff to use those tools for the betterment of the town and to provide you better information. Now, back to the main point of what I want to talk to you about. Last meeting, you asked us to reach out to the Board of Elections to find out about the occupancy tax. Melanie was kind enough to do that, and we have to have a, if the council chooses to do an election this fall, we have to have a resolution to the Board of Elections by August 1st, I believe. Is that correct? There would be no additional charge to the town to add that to the ballot, as we understand. So at some point, probably in the near future, council needs to give us some direction of whether you would like to have a resolution prepared. The other thing, and some of you may know this, I may have mentioned it to you, I mentioned the League Conference earlier, it's in Winston-Salem, April 24th through the 26th, and we have been invited to do a presentation. First time we've ever been invited to do a presentation to the League of Municipalities. And there will be a panel discussion on our budgeting process and how we have tied our budgeting process to our priorities that we did several years ago. So kudos to everybody that worked on that project. Finance Department did heavy lifting, but everybody in this building did, because we tied the budget to your priorities and also put some benchmarks in. Speaking of priorities, we do have a workshop on February 23rd, and the second one is scheduled, I think, for March 5th. You should be receiving some information on that in the next day or so. The other thing I want to mention to you is, the mayor and I met with the chamber director the other day, and she has invited the mayor to address their top, I think it's the top-tier investor group with the chamber, about some of the things the town is doing in Indian Trail, some of the things are going on. And I think that's very good news of the progress of your work and the progress that we're making in the town. So that will be March 26th, I think. Is that right, Mayor? And so we'll, we'll have some stuff on that. Before I move up to upcoming items, is there anything, any questions? Okay. Upcoming items, you see a whole bullet list there. We've got several workshops. One, Mr. Hunsinger will be presenting the watershed management workshop. We've also had a request from Mr. Barber to talk about economic development, and we gave you a policy last fall, kind of tossed around a draft, I think I sent it back out to you, a discussion on what you want to do with that. Also, I'll be meeting with Chris Platte tomorrow. I'll send you some updated information of anything significant that comes out of that. We do have some real estate update matters I need to bring to your attention with the attorney. One of it is to give you the progress on some Indian Trail Road rights of way and where we're standing on that. The other items you see on your list, the one item you do not see on your list that we do need to bring to your attention is, since the League Conference starts the morning of April 24th, we would like to see if the council would like to reschedule their April 23rd meeting, and we can give you some options on whether you want to do that and how you should do that. I think that is all I've got, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mike, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Brings us to council comments.
Councilmember Osserbrooks.
Well, thank everyone for coming out. I see some veterans out there. Thank you for your service. Other distinguished guests that we have out here, I appreciate it. Want to say happy Valentine's Day coming up to everyone. I tried my best to wear appropriate tie, but if it's not appropriate, then we can say it's for Sun Valley, so. Let's see. Want to say happy belated birthday to Caitlin Udi and Gracie. Thank you. I greatly appreciate the gift. Let's see. Also, staff, thank you for all you do, and council, thank you for all you do. I'm happy to serve with you. Everyone, have a good evening.
Councilmember Ambergy.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak on, to Linda Robinson for the school board election. You know, normally, we see a bunch of signs around, and we don't really know who these people are, but it sounds like you're highly qualified, and I wrote down your name for me, you know, my family. And the judge, she booked out of here, it looks like she must have an early case tomorrow. It's good just to see, you know, people wanting to do part, do their part with their community. Grace, happy Valentine's Day. Thank you, and God bless everyone.
Councilmember Gay.
Thanks for coming out. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. I just wanted to mention that our UDO isn't perfect, but we try to do it so that it's fair, it's fair for what people put into it. You know, there are times when, when maybe there's something that, you know, we can adjust, and town manager can adjust, you know, to make it a little more fair, but we like to take care of everybody, and we don't want it to be just, we don't want it to be just for one person, and it's disheartening when, you know, the same people come in each time complaining. So anyway, we're going to stay the course with our UDO. It's been a good job that our folks have done for it, and I appreciate our staff and what they've done. So everybody be safe going home, and I'll see you next time. Thank you. And Jim, keep up the good dunking of the ball. You came in behind a rooster, so you're a big improvement.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody coming out. Just like to say, thank you, Gracie, for the Valentine and the candy. Strikers Soccer Center here in Indian Trail now has spring youth signups, ages four to 18 here in Indian Trail. If you've got a youth you're looking to sign up, wish everybody happy Valentine's Day, and just remind you that there are two local florists right here around the corner. You've got Joanne's Florist, and you've got a new one up here in the pink building called Bonita, so it ain't too late to still get those flowers if you need them. So just like to remind you that we do have two wonderful florists right here around the corner. Everybody have a nice evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Bealick.
All right. So thank everyone that's here, that came tonight. I've been thinking the whole time I've been here about the little letter that you wrote earlier. It's really nice to see a child appreciate our, you know, appreciate our town, and we need more people like that, because it's going to be in good hands in the future with people like that in our community. So that's something I probably won't forget for a very long time, if ever. Other than that, have a wonderful Valentine's Day. Again, thank y'all all for coming, and drive home safe.
Mayor Coen.
Yes, thank everybody for coming. It's great to see you out there. Thank you. Boy Scouts tonight, you got a good one, because last time, those other guys were here for a lot longer. They were here like, like an hour or two. They got hungry sitting back there. So anyway, they, you picked a good night to come. And if you, I'd shut up, you'd get out of here a lot faster. I know that's what they're thinking. Anyway, Ms. Robinson, thank you for coming. You know, all the years, if you taught, and one quick thing, you know, I always like to thank our veterans for what they do, and our veterans, and thank you for what you do. But I think so many times, people forget to thank teachers for what they do. Teachers are, and you're on the front lines, too. I know, because I'm married to one, so thank you for your service, and thank you both for what you've done for, for the community. We had a parks groundbreaking before we started out today, over at the park, where broke ground on the new soccer field and the bridge over top of the pond over there. It's going to be beautiful. You know, one of the things, it's going to be a parking lot, there's going to be a lot of stuff, that you're going to see some stuff happening across the way there. And, you know, eventually, if we can get a, you know, bought the land over there also, if we can get a community center and start working on that, that's our, would be my goal, to see us get a community center. I'd like to see pickleball courts and a greenway and more parks, and this absolutely be the, the prime spot of Union County. People, and what a great thing to bring to Union County and have people remember us by as parks and community center and things for everybody. And I even draw people like the Boy Scouts, and hopefully, we can get you guys to come over, come down here and participate in our community center. And anyway, we get off on, but it's a great, great thing. Happy Valentine's to everybody. Gracie, thank you for, as your charming self, bringing us candies, and if Todd doesn't eat that piece of candy, or if I can get him to look the other way, I'll get it, because it's sitting right there. But anyway, thank you for that, and have a blessed day. I hope everybody has a blessed day, and thank you for coming again. And if I can, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.